Welcome to another edition of Tryin' Knoxville.com. Mike Roberts along for the ride one more time, broadcasting from the National Sprint Car Hall of Fame and Museum. And County Supervisor, Marion County Supervisor Mark Ramey, our guest this week. And first of all, I know every time I talk to you, I thank you for sitting down with me anywhere, but you're a busy man as always.
A lot of things going on. Board of Supervisors and jobs and businesses and it's good, good activity. Keeps keeps me young.
We'll go with that.
I think, I think, yeah.
Yeah, we'll go with that. Speaking of young, as we always do, and your first time on the show, we have to talk about this. We get in that waveback machine. Let's talk about where you were born and raised at.
Sure, sure. Born and raised in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Little, little town at that time, north of the cities, about 20 miles north called Blaine. At that time, about 5,000 people. Now it's about 85,000 people.
I gotta say, has it been sucked into the cities?
It has, it has. Dad used to pick me up from elementary school on a snowmobile, and I don't think they can do that anymore.
Probably not.
So, yeah, grew up in Minnesota. Mom and dad are from Albia originally, and dad got on with 3M and we ended up in Knoxville about when I started high school. About eighth, ninth grade year.
How'd your folks end up in the cities then?
After the Navy.
After the Navy.
Dad was in the Navy in San Diego, so he decided that he should go from San Diego to Minneapolis.
Yeah, let's get a different climate change completely.
Yeah, still try, still tease him about that a lot. But no, ended up there and that was where the work was, and so we ended up up north for a while.
You mentioned 3M and coming to Knoxville on that. First of all, any siblings? We haven't talked about that.
Have one brother, David. He lives not too far from here.
You never say younger brother every time I bring that up.
He's, he's younger. He's my, he's my younger brother, but by about, about four years. So, but David, yeah, he works at 3M, been there. And I'm gonna get this wrong, but I'm sure he's been there 20 years.
Probably pretty close, yeah.
Yeah, I always lose track of time, but, but yeah, he and Pam live just not too far here from where we're recording and, and been in Knoxville a long time.
I'm trying to remember, you said four years younger than you, so that makes him a couple of years younger than me. So him and I were probably in band together, I'm gonna say.
Oh, I'm gonna bet you were probably pretty close, yeah.
Yeah, I remember that just vaguely. He plays saxophone maybe, or what do I, I can't even remember anymore, but.
I don't even remember.
Really showing my age now, so.
Yeah, I don't remember what he played in band, to be honest with you. He played tennis with me. He was a freshman when I was a senior.
Your wife was also in band. That's how I met her.
Yeah.
Way, way back when.
Right, flute player. And then was part of the flag team and then, then drum major.
Right.
Along with, I think it was Melanie McKeever.
Yeah, it's, uh, those were good times. We traveled a lot in the summertime back then to relive in the youth a little bit. How'd you two meet, in school?
We met in school, yeah, yeah. Lori was a junior, I was a senior. And we met and dated for about four years, went to Iowa State together. And about my senior year, her junior year up there, we got married and I've been married 35 years.
You guys were still in college when you got married?
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Talk about taking it all on at once, I mean, you know?
Yeah, so it was fun and then we, then we went back to the cities. I went to law school in Minneapolis at Hamlin University. Graduated there in 1990 and we had our first child, Stephanie, and decided to come back home and raise our kids close to their grandparents. And so we moved back and I started in the insurance industry at the Principal Financial Group shortly thereafter. And been in that industry for the last 30 years.
When you went back in the cities, where'd you live at?
In the cities, we lived in a place called Northeast Minneapolis. So if you're not familiar with downtown Minneapolis.
I am, yeah.
Yeah, so it's just across the river. If you come across the river into what, where the Target Center is, that area, northeast is on the other side of that.
I've got some family up there. I just went to Lakeville this last weekend.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Again, another, another community that was sucked in by the cities, I mean, it used to be you get to Owatonna and you still had a little gap in there. Now it's like.
It's all, it's all one, it's all one. And Northeast Minneapolis, back in the day, you know, beautiful, big homes built, you know, probably between 1870s to 1920 was the predominant construction of the neighborhood. Most of them had been turned into apartments by the time we lived there in the, in the late 80s, early 90s. It's going through a bit of a renaissance now, like a lot of urban areas are, although they've had their issues up there over the last summer. But I don't think it impacted northeast that much, mostly downtown.
Yeah, it was, it did make it all the way up to, or right, I should say down to Eagan.
Yeah.
They had some problems down there as well.
Down there, south of the cities, yeah.
Of course, we had problems just up the road in Des Moines a little bit there for a couple nights too.
Absolutely.
It's been something, but try to stay away, even though you are technically a politician, we try to stay away from the politics right now, but let's get back to this and we'll watch The Sound this time as well. But somehow or another, you went from, again, getting your law degree, in the insurance game, county supervisor, and.
Yeah, where did that fit in?
Well, a relative of mine, apparently. You gotta be careful with my relatives, they, they back in. But we lost her a few years ago, but Lori got cornered, either way, I understand the story.
She did, she did. I was in between companies and I just bought the Coffee Connection from Tim and Lori and I were trying to figure out how to make that work.
By the way, Tim is married to my cousin, so we trapped ya.
This is a family connection, yeah. Tim Wall and a great guy and just really helped us out when we were getting the Coffee Connection started. And we took it over from him and I was just sitting there having a cup of coffee and Lori came marching over from across from the courthouse and, and I knew Lori from Republican politics. I knew Bob. Bob got me involved in politics back in, in the early 90s. He said, you need a, you need a hobby. So, so I worked a lot with Bob on primaries and caucuses and the things that we did for county, county Republicans.
Sure.
But Lori came marching across and came over, sat down and she said, you need something to do, so you need to run for county supervisor and kind of, you know her way. It was, it wasn't, it wasn't a discussion.
You gotta say, you need to or you're going to?
Yeah, it was not a discussion and we were not gonna talk about this. She just said, you need to be doing this. So I said, look, I don't have time to go get signatures. It's two days before they're due. Who's gonna go get signatures? And she said, I will.
Right.
And she did. And she got them all done and got them submitted to Jake and I got on the ballot and that's how it all started.
And it's all went crazy from there because not, not only involved in politics, but let's see, what year was that? 2012?
2012, yeah.
So you got thrown into the middle of a project that we're gonna start talking about here in a few, but since you become supervisor and a leader on, on that board, you've went through some different supervisors, but some changes have happened in the county. First of all, what I consider one of the greatest changes ever is the courthouse and the restructuring of it because it's old, for starters. You know, they did a great job. I think it was early 2000s when they did the outside of it, came in and fixed a lot of things, but the inside hadn't been touched for a long time. More importantly, the infamous elevator, which I've been stuck on, you know, back in the day. And it was becoming a problem.
Right.
And things needed updating.
Right, yeah. The elevator was no longer ADA compliant. We were grandfathered in because of the age of the elevator. I think it was like a 1975 vintage elevator. Steve Edwards, who is our Conservation Director, but he's also our ADA Officer for Marion County, does a great job with that, but kept telling us that one day, sooner or later, we could lose that, that grandfathering when we can't get parts for that elevator and other issues related to the Americans with Disabilities Act. And, and finally, I don't remember the exact date, but it's within the last two years, we, we couldn't get parts anymore. So every time it broke down, we were having to fabricate something to keep that elevator running. Chris Nestaby, who's our new Facilities Director and knew, he's been, I think, doing it now almost two years and doing an excellent job. We tasked him with the responsibility, what could we do to replace that elevator? So that we could become, we could modernize the courthouse, keep its historic character and bring it up to ADA requirements. We weren't utilizing the basement of the courthouse. The elevator did not go all the way to the basement. So if you were down there before the remodel, it was just a collection of rooms and boxes. The old jail cells were down there. It just wasn't being utilized very effectively. And now with the elevator going all the way down to the basement, we can utilize the entire, really five floors of the courthouse. We've got the four floors on the, on the upper level and then the basement. So, so we can utilize all that space. We can store things. Jake can put his voting machines down there and clear out some additional office space. So it has gone extremely well.
You bring up that basement. I worked down there for the county late 90s, I think it was for a couple winters, just doing the jail thing. And I remember when the state came down to inspect that and they said, this is not gonna last very long. So if it's not good enough for the prisoners, it wasn't good for anything. It's kinda condemned. So you've, you opened up that area by doing this, for one thing. You could actually make something work.
Yeah, Chris and the team did just a wonderful job. Steve McCombs, who I served with on the Board of Supervisors, contributed so much to the design and the building and, and working with Chris on, on bringing the courthouse up to speed. I work on the numbers. I work on the, kind of the vision and the ideas and, and how we'll pay for things, along with working with Jake. But Steve's the hands-on guy and he and Chris did just a wonderful job working with the people that we brought in, who advised us very well on what we should do.
It was very important to keep the historical value on that thing, but you mentioned the numbers and I've been in a lot of meetings as well as you. And the first thing is, when you start talking about taking on a million, $2 million, $3 million project, whatever, any direction you're going with it, is how are we gonna pay for this? And the panic hits. My taxes are gonna go up.
Right.
That's the first thing they think.
Exactly. And the courthouse will have zero impact on taxation because we paid for it in cash.
Yeah.
So it's $2.1 million. We had a, we had an overage, about $200,000 and we brought it in about, within $10,000 of that. You know, Chris will have the exact numbers, but very seldom does a government project come in on time and on budget. And so very proud of the team, Keisha and Steve, for all of their assistance and support and just Chris for all the work that they put in and his team. They were just outstanding and they were very cost-conscious, but yet we didn't scamp. We hired great engineers, great architects. We, we no longer do things on the cheap. We do things well. When you do things well, you save money.
Right, you mentioned the fact that you came in within 10,000 or something like that, you thought. The first thing that pops in my mind is the favorite words in government is change order. And for, and for those that don't know what change order is, that's when, okay, we've got a problem. Now we have to spend more money or we have to make these adjustments to the design or whatever. And a lot of projects, you'll hear that word five, 10, 15 times sometimes, you know? And for you guys to come in that close on everything, did take a lot of great planning. What I have to ask is, because I've been in there and it is fantastic, if you haven't been to courthouse, you know, take time, be responsible, social distance, but go in there and check things out because this all also happened during our pandemic. I mean, literally, I don't know if it was the first hammer that went to start tearing things down or tearing things apart or what, but it was pretty close to the same week.
Yeah.
And you guys have protective plastic up now, but that was already pre-planned. That wasn't, that had nothing to do with pandemic.
Yeah, it was, it was kind of a combination of events, Mike. So we had planned on modernizing the office spaces. We thought about what we had to do with Michaela and the Treasurer's Office and the Recorder and we wanted to put some more protective partitioning up for them and just make it a modernized space.
Sure.
More separation, the ability to have a little more of an, you know, kind of a private office for when the staff is working and also better for the public and better, better way to, for the public to engage. And then COVID hit.
Right.
And when COVID hit, it just was a natural fit that now these partitions were dual-purpose. It wasn't about maybe providing extra security. Now it was also about the virus. And, and we went right into the, launched right into that where we were asking all of our folks in the courthouse to move out and move over to East Elementary as a temporary location. City of Knoxville accommodated that request. And Brian and Aaron were just fantastic to work with in the city council and let us have that space. We, we had to reconfigure that space and get that ready for a temporary courthouse and courthouse operations. And then, then they moved back. So the courthouse staff did an amazing job doing that and juggling COVID at the same time and all the things that we had to do to continue to operate as a business.
That was such a roller coaster during that time period because as you mentioned, we're getting ready to start reconstruction of courthouse. We're gonna move offices, gotta make some adjustments doing that. Oh, by the way, you got closed for a little bit now because we don't know what this pandemic's gonna do. But while you're closing, we expect you to open back up with social distancing in mind, with security in mind at East Elementary that really wasn't set for that at all. All right? Your role was still county supervisor, but your role became a, I, I don't wanna take this away, but you're always a county supervisor 24/7.
Right.
But you had overtime last year. Some days, if there was more than 24 hours in the day, you found it. I don't know how you guys did that. And I'm not talking just you, everybody.
Oh, yeah.
Your staff, everybody.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you guys got thrown a curveball.
Yeah, that, that was, when you, when you sign up for this job and you're elected, you.
When Lori signed you up for this job.
When Lori signed me up for this job, that's right. And you don't anticipate or don't think, you know, what happens if we have a global pandemic? That's not the first thing front of mind to be a county supervisor. And Jeff Anderson, Kim Dorn, the folks we worked with out at 3014, that's when we moved the supervisor offices out there.
Out north, yeah.
And we spent 17 hours a day in what is now the Board of Supervisor Room, thinking about how we were going to handle COVID, how we were going to coordinate with municipalities, mayors, schools, hospitals, first responders and what we were going, what we were going to do, especially those first probably 45 days when there wasn't a lot known about the virus. Everybody was guessing. Federal government was guessing, the state was guessing. And we were getting all this information kind of just flowing downstream to us. And Kim and Jeff were just, you know, I couldn't be more proud of the work that they did and the work that they're still doing. Kim's putting on clinics. Her staff is working incredible amount of hours to do these clinics and, and they're consummate professionals. You know, I'll, I'll put our courthouse and county employees up against just about anybody. And I've worked in the private sector for 30 years and these folks would carry themselves well in any Fortune 500 company I've been a part of. They're, they're outstanding, outstanding folks.
The position of county supervisor last year, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you'd mentioned the cities, you mentioned staff, you mentioned dealing with things. You were the go-between, between federal, state, then comes county. And then you guys had to disperse whichever way, the meetings, the quarantines, if you will, how are we gonna handle hospitals? You know, what are hospitals gonna do? Because they're a private sector, a lot of them are.
Right.
You know, and you've, you've gotta juggle that and not, A, tip the economy skills to the point of complete annihilation and B, you know, not violate rights because it was on edge last year of what we're, what's being violated, what's not.
I mean, Mike, we had, we, we met with churches.
Right.
You know, I gave, I met with Churches Impella. I met with the Ministerial Association through Larissa Van Donslar here in Knoxville. And we talked about those things. We were having conversations about the First Amendment and what should churches do and what, what would be within the framework of how they could operate. And we had conversations with the state on that as well. What were the governor's orders as they came down? And there were debates about some of those things. Were they going too far? Were they not going far enough?
Right.
And, and in terms of building coalitions, I hate using that word, it sounds so political. But you're just, you're building a partnership. You, you, you don't come into the county supervisor job thinking you're going to do something like this, but when it comes, can you build an effective team? Can your team then go out and, and win the day with various partners throughout Marion County? They, everybody has their views on how COVID and what you should do with COVID. There are all kinds of differing views, but that's not really the issue. The issue is how do we keep our public safe? And also then, how do we continue to live? How do we continue to conduct business? And striking that balance, I'm, I'm proud of what we did. I'm proud of what we communicated, what our staff did. I'm proud of the mayors. Mayors did an incredible job. I'm proud of our first responders. Marion County continued to function and, and it wasn't without its problems, that's for sure and for certain. But, but we functioned as a team. We functioned as a, as a county that cared about its people and also cared about the fact that people needed to live and, and live their lives and carry on. So, so we, I, it's a good chapter for us. Again, not perfect, but certainly a good chapter for us.
You said chapters. Is there a book someday?
You never know. You never know. Lori's the writer of the, of the two of us, so, yeah.
That is true. You mentioned partnership and building partnerships and we're gonna change gears now to that partnership because something happened here a couple of years ago that I don't wanna say has never happened. I'm sure before me, things have happened locally, but I hadn't seen it happen locally. And there are a lot of times statewide, nationwide, a county and a city are about as oil and water when it comes to politics and government that there is to get along with. And the city of Knoxville and Marion County joined forces. How do I wanna say this? Not to take on the government, the federal government, but to deal with the federal government. This Knoxville VA was becoming a severe problem. Big announcement made back in early 2000s. They're gonna close the VA. 2009, for the most part, they did close and transfer all the patients out. They ran a clinic out here for a few more years till a new one was built. But we knew that whole time period that this was gonna be an issue. And it didn't get better. It didn't, you know, the, the magic fairy dust from the federal government and all the money came down to fix it, did not fix it because there wasn't anything.
Right, right.
You know, so it wasn't your first rodeo with dealing with the VA because like, again, you came on right in the heart of it, 2012. What caused you to change or go to the direction of partnering up? Because nobody wanted this thing.
Right.
The city didn't want it originally. County didn't want it originally. A private business tried to and couldn't do nothing with it. It was an eyesore.
Right, right.
What happened in these events?
Oh, so early on, when I first got on the board, I got involved in some early meetings with the city of Knoxville that they were having with the VA. At that time, it was still under VA ownership.
Right.
And we had some very, some very good discussions with the VA. There were some, some possibilities that we could potentially, if we could, if, if we agreed to them, we could take on parts of the VA over time. But it was the money. It still was going to cost an incredible amount of money for Knoxville. At that time, I wasn't sure about the county and, and our involvement and how, how much should we be involved?
Right.
In this type of a, a project. Still thinking about partnerships and what we needed throughout Marion County. Over the course of time, from that period until about two years ago, I disengaged from the project. Knoxville, they didn't really want to, they certainly didn't wanna take it on financially. So it kinda sat. And then Brian Hatch became mayor. He started working on that, started trying to just figure out who to talk to. So Brian did a lot of front-end work. Again, this was a total team effort from, from city and county perspective. Aaron Adams did a lot of front-end work, but they were just figuring out, who do we go to talk to?
Right.
About the VA to fire this conversation back up. I had a person that's pretty well-known in our town, Kevin Kincaid, who's a friend and we graduated together in a class in 1982. Came over and talked to me and asked me if I would be interested in getting re-engaged in that project. We had a long conversation and, you know, Kevin's very civic-minded and has done a lot for the hospital. Just made that an excellent location for healthcare in Marion County and really in Southern Iowa. And so as I thought about it, as we talked about it, I thought, maybe this is time, time for the county to get involved in a different way. So thinking about it more from my business background, I said, what is it that Marion County can do to acquire the VA? I stopped thinking so much about Knoxville acquiring it. What could the county do to acquire it? Because that was the major holdup. By that time, it had switched from VA to GSA, General Services Administration. Their job, and one job only, dispose of properties.
Any way they can.
Any way they can, to whomever they can. So there aren't a lot of requirements here and it was going to go away to somebody. So it was almost zero hour for us. It's kinda make a decision or let it go.
Right.
And if you let it go, that result may be something you don't like, all right? So as Brian and Aaron and I talked and I worked through the numbers with some folks, county balance sheet's about $140 million, give or take. We leveraged $8 million roughly when we built the law enforcement center. That debt had been paid down. At that time, it was probably about $2.2 million left to pay. We're down under $2 million now of that. In the business world, if you have that capacity and you're not using that, that's like letting it erode.
Right.
And so I decided, let's see if we can do that. Let's see if we can leverage some of that balance sheet to acquire the VA and start doing some of these development projects, not just in Knoxville, throughout Marion County. A person who was critical in all this was actually Mike Nardini, City of Impella. I had a lot of meetings with Mike. Mike is an expert in bonding and he understands all that public finance and the nuances of public finance. I'm a lawyer by training. So it was just some great conversations with Mike and that led to our cooperation with Prairie Ridge. That was a test case. For, for me, could we put together financing to assist a city with public infrastructure? And it worked, worked well. The concept was sound. The bonding part of it was going to work very well. Interest rates extremely low right now.
Exactly.
Very favorable. So why not apply that to this project as well? And so we put it together in a package and so we moved forward with both the Prairie Ridge project and the VA project. And that's how we got, that's how we acquired the VA.
You mentioned GSA's job is to dispose to whomever, wherever. And just to give the definition of that, it could have been to somebody that's not gonna do a thing with it. Just let it rot.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
And very scary.
It could have been that, could have been more what we call federally subsidized housing, which is not a bad thing, Mike, at all. And we're certainly not opposed to those things, but to have more of that. The, the real need in Marion County is workforce housing and what we'll call, you know, that not starter home, but that next home up.
Sure.
From there. And so Knoxville itself is fairly landlocked in terms of how it can grow and develop. If you look, if you just took a map and drew a map around Knoxville, there's a lot of farm ground that, on the outskirts of the city, but not a lot of it's up for sale.
Right.
And the VA sits right in the center of town and it's 150-plus acres of extremely prime ground. It just happens to have a lot of old dilapidated buildings on it. So the need for that style of housing became the primary driver to acquire the VA. From my perspective, and it became the perspective of Keisha and Steve as we talked through it. And this was definitely through a lot of conversations with the two of them. Great colleagues on this board, care so much about the county and about how we, how we deal with our taxpayers because they know it's taxpayer money.
Right.
They take it seriously. And so we wanted to be the best stewards of that money that we could be, but not just sit on it. Not just sit and do nothing because doing nothing was not an option. But as we looked at the picture, we know, we knew that it would be better to control our own destiny than let somebody else control it.
Right.
And that's what it ultimately came down to. You can either write your story or let somebody else write that story and I'd rather write my own.
And for the average person that doesn't understand that, when I say buy it and let it sit, it's, it's a tax write-off for major corporations for, and not just locally domesticated corporations. It could be somebody on the other side of the world.
Absolutely, absolutely. That was part of the GSA portfolio.
Yeah.
So we didn't want that to happen.
How did you guys make this happen? Because again, this, this idea came up two years ago. Things were really getting close to rolling. We're gonna make it happen. Pandemic comes in and what appears to be slow things down, but there was still some red tape, there was still some structuring, there was still some planning involved. And again, you're the numbers guy, but you're not the full planner of this whole thing. How did you convince locally the people to do what we need to do to make, move forward on this thing? And then how did the plan come together then? Who's, who's planning this project?
Well, I, I guess I'll say I'm kind of the primary mover. Having a strong regulatory background, I've dealt with the feds, I've dealt with the state and various states in my career in financial services. We needed, we needed a little bit of a forceful personality to work with the feds and the state government. Well, that was me.
Right.
And.
You are outspoken, I mean, I gotta say, once in a while.
Oh, Mike, Mike, I could, I'm just, you know, I'm just a lovable fuzzball. That's who I am.
You're point-blank. You're, you're honest. I've seen you in meetings. You're honest. I mean, you're, you're not gonna take a beating from anybody. You're not getting pushed around, but you're, you're not gonna speak out of your mind either.
Right.
And make stuff up.
Right. No, I, I think it's better to be direct.
Yeah.
And if somebody wants to have a lively discussion, I'm all in.
Right.
And let's just keep it factual and we'll be good. And I think you have to be that way.
Right.
Some people have said, well, Mark, that doesn't win you a lot of votes. Well, that's not what I'm here for. It's not just here to get votes. It's here to do the right thing. And sometimes those conflict with each other.
Sure.
And I'm gonna err toward doing the right thing every time.
In the end, you have to live here.
You have to live here and you have to look at yourself in the mirror.
Right.
And I'm not doing this to, to have a political career. And the whole point of being a supervisor is about how can we best serve not just the people who live here today, but the people who are gonna live here tomorrow? We want to have a future. You know, the Constitution talks about for ourselves and our posterity and those words resonate with me a lot.
Right.
It doesn't matter whether you're local, state, federal, it does not matter in these public service roles. That's what we're about. So you're trying to establish a way so you can live today, but also for those people who will live here tomorrow. So we, I tend to live by that. To the best way I can with all my, uh, with all my flaws.
So you're the powerhouse. You're leading the charge on this thing to move forward on the plan.
We had a lot of help. Uh, Brian and Aaron worked with me just very closely. Throughout this, the, the entire time we worked with the state and the feds and acquisition, we were the three people. We had authority from the city council and from the board of supervisors to go and do that. And, uh, so it was a great team effort to get the state historic preservation office, to get Iowa economic development, to get the governor's office and to get GSA all singing from the same song sheet. But it took some pretty intense meetings, a lot of intense discussion. And a couple of just basically, I'm gonna walk out of here and not, and not do anything if you guys don't get your act together. And, uh, and they did. GSA was a tremendous partner in this.
That's what I was curious about, cause a, a lot of times the federal government, are they an entity of the federal government? A lot of times you get the old Abbott and Costello, who's on first? You can sit here and have a conversation, but by the end of the conversation, you really didn't get anywhere.
No, they, they were, they were great partners. And, and in fact, as we got into the discussion, they saw what we were trying to do, they were really cheering for us. So they did everything, they moved heaven and earth so that we could get in a position to acquire. But because it was a national historic preservation site that was done in two thousand and twelve, we had to leap a whole bunch of additional hurdles with the state and the feds to overcome some of those objections. So when you saw us, uh, bidding or at least doing tours of the two oldest buildings on campus, that was to satisfy some of those historic preservation requirements. But initially, those were pretty, that's what was holding everything up. It was just trying to dot all those i's and, um, we had a lot of meetings. Chris Kramer, uh, supported us tremendously. Debbie Durham, uh, from the state, uh, helped us a lot. And those were the two primary state, uh, uh, support departments that we had. So between, uh, between that and Brian, Aaron and myself, that's how we were able to finally get the VA acquired.
You mentioned historical preservation and, uh, I, I admire those people for what they do. But at the same time, some of the logistics, some of the writing in the agreements is everything from not just buildings, but trees. And you have to get permission on some of these sites to knock down trees. So you got a lot of trees out there that are just falling over right now. It's just, it's one of those things that.
As, as we went through the agreements, Mike, uh, it was basically I wanted a freer hand to be able to deal with the VA. And we ended up getting that. We had very few requirements by the end of it.
Had to market those two buildings for sixty days?
Yeah, it was roughly sixty days. I had to put that out there and, but at the end of the day, my, my plan was we were gonna knock them down anyway. Those buildings were uninhabitable. They were the worst and probably the most dilapidated on the entire VA campus. And we, we need the housing and we need whatever that VA district is going to be, but VA district two point O. And we wanna respect the past. Uh, it was a tremendous employer in Marion County and in Knoxville. Tremendous influence throughout many decades. There is a positive contribution that the VA had, uh, to our county and to the city of Knoxville. But now it's time to move on.
Right. How do you preserve that past?
Well, that's, that's a, that's a great discussion. Brian and I have talked a lot about this. And it's going to be through probably some type of memorialization of the VA district, uh, as we start construction. We're going to take like the stained glass windows out of the chapel and put those maybe with the county, uh, historical society and work with them. So there are some things we have talked about to move forward and, and make sure that we do that. Using the brick for certain purposes, and reusing some of that material, uh, is a good way to do that. And of course signage. To make sure people know what was there.
That's, that's, that's awesome. Cause I, I like to hear that, cause I am, as much as I appreciate moving forward and as, as lousy as I did in history back in school, I appreciate history now that I'm older.
Tends to be that way.
The age gets to us after a while. The plan to put this thing together and change over, uh, again, not saying you can't do it by yourself, not saying that the supervisors in the city can't do it by themselves, but you're not paid for that, guys. I mean, you, you have other jobs you have to tend to. Who's gonna be, who's gonna be taking care of this project?
Yeah, Chris Nestebi, our facilities director.
Same one that did courthouse.
Same, same person that led the courthouse redesign. Chris has got a lot on his plate. Uh, when, uh, Chris worked for me, uh, in, in the insurance industry for about four years, when I ran a shop down in Kansas City. Before that, worked for MFA, uh, down, uh, in Southern Iowa. And just, uh, tremendous background in construction and facilities and kinda a guy that can do it all. And, uh, knows how to plan, knows how to make sure things come in under budget. We coordinate closely and he coordinates with the other supervisors extremely, uh, extremely close. But Chris will lead the project, uh, from an operational perspective. We will get a contractor. They'll be the general contractor. They'll have a lot of responsibilities under the terms of the bid documents that we put out. So we expect the GC to be the one who's actually doing everything and making sure things that, you know, all the dyes are, eyes are dotted and t's are crossed. But Chris will be there, uh, and the supervisor will be there. I mean, I plan on showing up regularly, uh, and wanting updates on what's going on. I know Steve McCombs will and Keisha will as well.
This is close to your heart, cause I even saw you had a fire out there. They had a fire out there, I think it was last summer maybe or. Yeah, and you showed up. You don't show up to fires.
Not very often, not very often. And when that happens out there, yeah. Yeah, I, I come out there. Um, we wanna make sure that, uh, we wanna make sure this goes well. Yeah, in, a lot of times in business, we say we need to win. When we're working on a particular project, this is one of these projects we need to win. And we wanna make sure it's done right, make sure the money is handled well, make sure we get the right people in to do the jobs for us and that they can do the jobs uh, that we need them to do.
Timeline for demolition. I mean, everybody's like, okay, we've got control now. Knock it down and we'll start building next month.
That's right. Doesn't work that way. It does not work that way. Uh, between making sure we line up our bonding and financing for that, uh, so that part is moving forward. We've got our bid documents in our last board of supervisor meeting. We approved those for release. So those have been released. By the end of the month, we'll go through a process of selecting, going through the bid documents, reviewing people who have, uh, expressed interest. And that, our engineering firm will be an advisor to that process. And end of March, beginning of April, we'll actually start the selection process for contractor. The goal is by sometime in May, that we're knocking things down. With substantial completion a year from now.
Right. Cause it, it can't come down a month. I mean, let's, let's be realistic.
Our engineering firm has told us, even with someone full-time doing this, with all the things that we have to get done, we're looking at a year, maybe outside of a year to get that done. When that is complete, uh, then it'll be time to hand that baton to the city of Knoxville and they'll begin to work on infrastructure. So sewers, roads, cause we're tearing it all up, Mike. We're everything underground, roads, all of it. The roads won't withstand, uh, the demolition project anyway, or process anyway.
Well, and yeah, and you're talking about the roads on the campus itself, but something else to consider also, if I remember correctly, the boiler system for that facility, does the whole area, including the south side of Pleasant Street, no, doesn't that feed over the, uh, building nine and the other houses too? Underneath that street, if I remember correct?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so. We've not run into any issues like that yet.
I might misunderstood that maybe. So, uh, that, but again, by the time you do demolition, by the time the truck traffic happens, you know, you guys have plans in place to make sure, I'll, I'll use the dam for example. I mean, great project on Red Rock Dam, but the road was damaged during the process also.
Right. And we worked on that, uh, gosh, that was first term when I worked with Tyler and we actually put a provision in the agreement that if you break it, you buy it. And, uh, so he was reimbursed for the repair work that they had to do on that. Same thing here. So we started, and I'm gonna get the dates wrong, but it was about December, working with the city of Knoxville on, uh, transportation routes. And how we wanted trucks to go out. What's the schedule going to be like for demolition? When will we have days off? This is going to be loud. The town's gonna know this is going on. So it can't be twenty-four seven, you know, seven days a week. People are gonna need breaks from that. So we've got all that planned into our work schedule and when we talk to a contractor, we're gonna go through all that with them. We'd like Sundays to be a day off where they're, they're not working on Sundays. And give people a break from the trucks and the noise and the things that'll be happening.
And it will be, but again, it's progress and that's this show's called Try Knoxville because I want people to try Knoxville, not just for Knoxville raceway, not just for tourism itself. I want them to move home. You moved home. It, it's, it's a great place to live and this is forward thinking. How important is that to any community, not just Knoxville, but to any community to keep this progress growing?
Yeah, so, uh,
You have those out there, say, oh, just save our money.
Oh, absolutely. I've had a lot of discussions with folks where we've, we've, in persuading people that this is the right thing to do with our borrowing capacity. Even though it will increase property taxes and we've been very transparent about that, uh, from a board of supervisor standpoint, we've had multiple meetings. Public documents are available on, on our estimates of what this will be and what this will do to property taxes. Progress for the sake of progress is not a good thing. What you're seeing in Knoxville right now with schools, with hospital, what we're doing with the VA and some other projects is directed progress. Focused progress, progress with a purpose. And that's what excites me because in a business, in the business world, that's what you have to do. Why are you building? Why are you developing? Why are you going in this direction? Why do you want this client base? You have to know that. And our whys are pretty clear. Our tax base must grow. We, we need more people. Marion County has not substantially grown in the eight years I've been on the board. We've been roughly in that thirty-two thousand to thirty-four thousand population range. And that's been Iowa's issue for a long time. You know, we've stayed two point nine to three point two million, you know, give or take. We need, we, we want people to come here. It's a great place to live. Great place to raise a family. Cassie in the school district, that's what they're doing with the school project is they're thinking not just about, hey, we need new buildings and the buildings are old and we need to knock the buildings down. It's how do we create a modern education environment for the next, for the next generation of students? And it's not sufficient to say, well, those buildings were good enough for you and I, cause we were in those buildings, Mike. It's, it's what does the modern education environment require? It's different. It's changed. I mean, look at what's going on with, you know, uh, distance learning now and, and, uh, how people utilize stay at homework and what COVID has done there. Things have changed. So we have to respond to those changes in a very orderly way that brings Knoxville into the future and points away so that people want to live here, not just today, but ten years from now. And I think that's important and every project that's going on has that as a component. And that's what excites me. I think that's what people are thinking about. So it's not just about me. It's about my kids. Will they wanna return home someday as well? Grandchildren, will they wanna return home? And, and not just the coming home part, but who else is gonna move here? Who else is gonna make Marion County their home, Knoxville their home?
That's just it, because you mentioned the schools and one of the things they look at is education. Safety. And that's two things you're addressing right now. We talked about the school, just broke ground. Starting the middle school up, twenty-first century school is, is what the project is. The safety of the courthouse now and, and it's still the same old courthouse as far as to visually look at it. But the elevator is user friendly and safe. Your employees are more safe, you know? Yes, it's just plexiglass, but at the same time, we'll use the pandemic as an example. We don't have to worry about spreading the germs. We really don't have to worry about somebody throwing a pencil or somebody getting mad about taxes, you know? How important is that to a community? When somebody's coming in brand new to come into a safe environment? Because this world, we, we talked about this earlier. This world is such a roller coaster with protesting and everything else. You know, Knoxville, Iowa, so far we stayed off the news with this.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, and we wanna keep it that way.
How do we do that?
Now, growth has its own challenges. Right? We've seen that in other places where suburbs have grown and they've changed their, their character and that's brought new issues and problems to deal with. So we recognize that growth also has that component to it. But I think what we, what we see in all of these projects and the way that the city is thinking about how it's going to move forward and, and Dylan and Brian and, and John Gada and the rest of the city council, they're, I think they're you're seeing a very thoughtful, you're seeing a very forward-looking, but very respectful of understanding where everybody's at. Approach.
Cause there is that balance.
You have to. You have to take all those things into consideration. And, um, you know, the idea of saying, well, things don't have to change. Things will never change. I heard that with the VA, Mike. You'll never get it. Never happen. Guess what? And it's gonna happen. We can't think that way anymore. And we can't think like this, well, the VA will never close. You and I heard that when we were kids. It'll, oh.
There's always gonna be military, there's always gonna be people in need.
And the, we, the world moves on. And we stay. That can't happen anymore. We have to move too. And we have to decide in the, keeping the culture, the safety. And not just the safety, but just the way of life that we have. But how can we move that forward into the twenty-first century and beyond? So that people do wanna move here, businesses wanna come here. We need to grow our job base significantly in Marion County. We have a two point one percent unemployment rate, which is excellent. But that means we don't have a lot of people for jobs.
It's the chicken and the egg factor here because you always hear this argument of, well, we need housing, well, we need job for housing.
Yeah, jobs come for, it's always jobs. It's always about jobs. And then housing and everything else follows. I'm a kind of an old, uh, you know, uh, it's Adam Smith and the Wealth of Nations and you, you got to expand your job base, but you gotta give businesses a reason to come. So you do have to take care of your house. And the VA project, the schools, what Kevin's doing with the hospital, what we're seeing the city of Knoxville do, what Pella's doing, Pleasantville, Melch, everybody's thinking about how do we take care of our house in the best way we can? So that we'll get more people to move here. People wanna live here, raise their families here. We need to do that. It's no different when we played sports. Alright? Different sports, different time, but you take care of home field. You take care of home field. And we need to do that for our home field.
I like the ties of the alumni, myself, two years behind you and Kevin. You guys are leading the charge on this thing. The community's come back together with the people that I came and went a couple, two or three different times. You guys moved away, came back. Kevin, same, same exact story. Moved away, came back. Final question, every show I do with a new one. Tell me why someone should try Knoxville slash Marion County. Why move here?
It is a ground floor opportunity, Mike. Everything that we just talked about, Knoxville has a history. We have a, a great history. We have people who love their community, people who've been here a long time. But at the same time, it's a ground floor opportunity. Everything that's going on is an opportunity to be of what Knoxville will be ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. So when you think about, about remaking something and being a part of that process, this is the time to do it. And so for a young couple that has a young family and wants to be a part of a safe town that is looking forward, this is that time, uh, to be a part of that. And I think that's exciting for folks, uh, to help be able to shape a community. So I think that's why, why Knoxville is a, is a, is going to be an up and coming place, not just next year. But ten years from now. Uh, that's what excites me and that's what should excite anybody who wants to come here and especially any business that wants to come here.
I've got grandchildren looking forward to it.
Good, excellent. So do I.
Sounds good. We can talk all day. We've, we've, we've been known to talk a lot, so we're gonna wrap things up. Do come on again sometime though.
Mike, I appreciate the time. Thank you. Anytime.
Alright, that wraps up this edition of TryKnoxville.com and, uh, wow. I'm excited about our future, folks. And, uh, take a listen to other podcasts we've done previous to this. We got some more coming up about how great this community is. We'll see you next time.